Cell phones, these through vibrator are off. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Satellite Beach. This is the regular council meeting. The date is May 2nd, 2012. The time is approximately 7:55 PM. All right. And there are some agenda items that, since the agenda has been published, that we're not going to be able to handle today. Or the city manager has asked that we move up because we do have some people in our...
Mike, if I could, first of all, the citizen panel for fishing government, advisory panel for fishing government, requested that they present their final report to the council next regular meeting, which is May 16th. They have another meeting scheduled for next week. And they've been working very hard on the report. So there'll be no interim report this evening. Also, the attorney representing one of the interests of Satellite Arms is here at the request, as suggested by the city council. I believe it would be appropriate to move that individual up as they made the special effort to be here.
What number?
That's agenda item number 11. And then agenda item 10, our city engineer here is for that particular item. And Doug Hailing in with that is Public Works Director. Tonight's his 25th wedding anniversary, might be nice to get him out.
Alan, I think 25th is paper.
You said you get her paper?
Lots of luck, Alan.
Is he raised paper?
I don't know.
All right, agenda item number 11. We'll do 11, 10, and 15 in that order. And then we'll come back to other down. Agenda item number 11 says, "Discuss, take action on code violations" at 1170 South Patrick Drive. And...
It's Michael Faro.
Michael Faro is here. He is the lawyer. So, Mr. Beadle, I will hand it over to you. Good evening, sir.
As you may recall, from prior meetings, I indicated the council that your attorney now was representing a potential purchaser of the Satellite Arms property, which is Mr. Faro representing that individual. And he's been the one providing the updates with the bankruptcy proceedings in the lab. Apparently, the order has not been signed yet, although it was submitted approximately two weeks ago. But Mr. Faro is here to provide an update when we notice this time.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the sexual advice happened is the initial borrower of the property, the bank that they borrowed the money from went into bankruptcy. And that bankruptcy proceeding was taken place in the District Court of Nevada. So it's been a lengthy process. There are numerous different entities that are tied into that bankruptcy process. But the Chapper selling trustee in that bankruptcy proceeding has agreed to the sale of over 51% of the direct lenders. That bankruptcy estate was very confusing. Had a small percentage of the interest in the loan, it's about 17%. Outside of that 17%, 51% of remaining interest have voted to go ahead and sell the note as well as the mortgage to my client, ESO Satellite Arms LLC. We are just waiting for the bankruptcy judge to sign off on that sale. The bankruptcy estate has processed many sales like this in the past. And the judge clearly signs off on them. It's just a matter of time until the judge does actually sign off on that sale. At that point, we will close on the purchase of the note. And we have come to an agreement with the borrower as well as the guarantor of that loan that in exchange for us providing the deficiency, not wanting to pursue a money judgment, they will go ahead and allow the property to just transfer title over to my client, ESO Satellite Arms. As soon as that happens, which can be anticipated once the bankruptcy court signs off, it should be a week or so to close out the note, sign the leases, and obtain title to the property. It will be a quick move to the property, where they can start getting rid of it as it's properly ready. So we do anticipate that actually wants the judge sign off on the order. For your back of the count.
Would have any anticipation of length of time? Are we looking at a month, three months, three months?
I would hope it would just be a brief while longer. This is an ex parte motion, which basically means nobody else has the right to object. We're just letting the court go and they sign off on it. That usually is a pretty quick process. I don't have a lot of experience in Nevada bankruptcy, in central Florida bankruptcy court, out of all events out of all in the middle of the beach. So we're anticipating when it should be any time now. Even here, where we do have, where other people are trying to object, usually 21 minutes is all a critical wait in the bankruptcy proceeding before they go ahead and do it anyway. In some instances, it is 30. So it was originally the order submitted on April 19th. I really don't see it going past May 19th. However, I hope that it will be done this week.
Are you aware, is your client doing any sort of planning while he's waiting for this all to play out with regard to what he's going to do with the property? Those, the permits he's going to need, all those sorts of things? So he's ready to go?
He is. He has contractors lined up to do the work on the property. Of course, he can't pull the permits until he has the ownership of the property. My understanding is that the city is excited to have somebody take over this property. So I'm glad about the fast response, I have permanent applications. It will be able to be performed quickly. I'm also curious as to whether there are any current weeds or assessments against the property currently in the city. I agree with how the city's cooperation or if there are those issues.
We would like to support you, actually, your, the guy you work for, the guy who bought the property. We want to support him or her to the maximum extent possible and get that thing back better and operating.
Thank you, we appreciate that. We've got to work incredibly.
Nothing other than I know this is a real sticky subject in the community because it is, it's obviously, it's a hazard and it's also unsightly. So for that, I appreciate it, moving quickly, that's for sure.
One of the things that we did in Scott, just remind us, we did clean up the property once. And we have been discussing whether to clean it up again. We, you know, to come in with this good news. However, if it goes much further, we may have to contract with someone to go in there and then put a lien on it. Because we were thinking if it's an instantaneity, you know, if the judge signs off on it next week, that's fine. But if it's another month, like the councilwoman Deans said, it is, it's unsafe and unsightly. And the unsafety, it has a pool, doors are torn, it's, it's, it's a haven for survey stuff. So we need to go in there and clean it up or your client will go in there and clean it up. I guess he could. Something needs to be done with it.
Yes, we agree. And we've actually been working with the current lender trying to permission to go ahead and take some steps to make sure that everything is boarded up at least so that there aren't transits living in the property, any issues like that. In the meantime, as soon as, as soon as the judge signs off on the order, I'm not sure if we can take steps immediately to preserve the property in case of future damage. And also, of course, protect the liability for any trespassing property that can't go forward on the same day.
Sir, could I ask you, take a seat? Just if we have any public comment or questions? Any public comment or questions?
Thank you, 01690 Jackson Court. I'm sure all of us are aware of it. Nevada is one of those states that's at the top of the list for foreclosures. So I know Florida is also. But having worked in foreclosure on residential sites, sometimes when you're in that big thing, that's probably where the delay is. Not so much. I mean, they probably have billions of them, but they're doing. Obviously, the property is more valuable with the structures on it. So I think we should keep the structures, not knock them down. And then also, if we maintain the structures, it's a quick turnaround for them to come in and get it up and going and get money back into our tax base.
Thank you. Other public comments? All right, I'll just bring it back to the council. Anything on the update?
I have one question because this, I don't know if this is the local gossip or the myth or whatever in the community. Was there a permitting issue with this property?
Recently?
No, when they renovated it before, because I'm hearing about these air conditioning units that were, yeah. Can you set the refrigerator?
They put the air conditioning units on, on top of, on the roof. And they were required to remove them because it was the system what had been approved.
For the construction drawing?
Yes, yes. That's my understanding. I know, I met with a number of neighbors on that particular issue. And they were removing building departments.
So, okay, so the permit was issued, but then they...
They had a permit and, and it was then had bearing with the permit. And it was resolved. I met with the neighbors, primarily the ones that lived on Florence Quarter because they're the ones who obviously saw it. And the building department handled it and removed it.
I'm still a little confused. So it went all the way through the construction drawing process and permit approval? And then the last minute, these air conditioning units showed up on the top?
I can get you this, again, I, I met with the neighbors, turned it over to the building, so the building department's John.
You're John's here?
Sure. Go ahead. Best I can, John, recall.
I was made aware that, as far as the building drawings, I was part of my time. I was made aware that they were on roof and they weren't allowed to be on roof. So we basically took them off the roof. And they, they reinstalled them on that guy's. So as far as the construction drawings, no, we're on construction drawings.
That's peculiar. So an engineer signed up on CDs and we didn't, we signed up on CDs and they didn't know where the air conditioning units were?
Signed up on what's good?
The construction drawing.
Construction drawings, they're not showing the air conditionals on the roof.
They show any air conditions at all?
I recall, it's been a long time since we...
I'd like to look at those drawings.
Yeah.
I just don't want the same snafu to happen with this new velver.
Okay, any other council comments? I hope it happens. I know, we, sir, please keep Mr. Beadle updated on, you know, what's happening in Nevada because, so then he'll keep us updated. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks for your work. Thank you. Agenda item number 10, Mr. Grady.
David, city engineer, David.
David, remember you.
Thank you for taking me. Thank you for hiring. Cassia Phase 3, Grand Department. David King, put me under assistance. Good evening. 49 is the bid award for Cassia Phase 3. This is the third base of course, of the improvements to the Cassia Basin. The first two bases include similar types of improvements, including piping replacements, water quality improvements, treatment facilities. And this last phase incorporates improvements along Cassia Boulevard. Most notably, the piping in the existing ditch between Laurel and Temple is included in the scope work. The construction of a new bedway from State 513, South Patrick, two A1As included with it. Replacing of the piping along that existing stretch, including in front of the school, in front of the church, and other various improvements. So the bids were received on February 22nd. Four bids were received. The Cassia Corporation submitting the lowest bid. They did have a base bid, which included all the base amount of work. And then an added, additive award, which included resurfacing a portion of Cassia. Cassia is in decent shape right now. It is going to get impacted during construction. So we wanted to include an added award, if we could afford such, to resurface that and have that do it again. Our engineers estimate a bid time of 1.3 billion. Cassia's bid, we've done it accurate and complete. We're very devoted with Cassia. Cassia is one of, a local firm that we deal with, local firm from our standpoint, since they're located at Fort Worth also. We've done numerous projects with them. And these types of projects, piping, similar type of projects, they've done excellent. And we have no problem with recommending them for this project. And also, Cassia was the project that the city had on their recently completed North City Monks project that went well and came in under budget. The funding of the project, which I know you have some more information with staff on, but funding of the project, in your package, the funding of the project's based, the majority of it's from the 319H grant, which is an extension of the grant that we, the city was successful with in Phase 1 and Phase 2 also. It's a 60% match for the overall project funding. And then also, the city was, was successful in acquiring or requesting and giving $185,000 in transportation impact fees for the sidewalk portion of the project. The, there was a planned delay to this bid award. Again, it was opened February 22nd. We had bids good for 90 days, that's part of the bid documents. So we could submit in your back of the, you know, the all grant which the city recently heard that they were unsuccessful with. So again, we're recommending award to Cassia Corporation in the base bid and if possible, the added dollar amount.
All right, I'll bring you back to the council.
I guess earlier, we heard the county is going to bring it to the Board of County Commissioners to see if they can offer us $100,000 worth of projects. So that includes us with a whopping $230,000 that we need you to come up with. Mike, have you thought about, I know in your memo, you kind of dispersed it through several funds. How that would be then dispersed if we do get the $100,000?
That would have to be a decision, you know, we just found out about this at the beginning of this week. Certainly, if the interlokal agreement is approved by the county, then the actual amount allocated for many of these funds could be reduced based upon amendment to the budget by the city council. Yeah, so I wouldn't recommend awarding this would be based upon receiving the $100,000, even though we're probably 99% certain that that money will be forthcoming. But to proceed with the recommendations contained in the finance director's report regarding the source of the funding. And then we can amend that when the $100,000 comes back.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, but the, the last pused grant application that they did for us, is this the one that was turned down?
It would have assisted with the local funding, reduced the amount of local funding.
Okay, and, and that would have been applied to this project?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I remember though, from the last meeting, the discussion went along the lines of there's another opportunity to put in for that grant in June or July?
July. It will automatically roll into the July funding cycle. David can, can respond to it. But we had several extensions on this grant. And I thought we were very fortunate to have DEP say, we're going to give you one more extension so that we could award this bid. We really are running out of time on, on...
How, I mean, A, we talked about going back and looking at that initial grant application that was written that was unsuccessful and going back and looking at it for improvement potential to go to reapply in July?
I don't think you have to reapply. It just goes back to the cycle.
But if you rewrite it, do you have to reapply?
I think you reapply.
Okay.
Our grant is very competitive in the round. They have very limited amount of time.
Okay.
You know, the challenge that you have is that our, what is the deadline on the grant?
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at, the timing.
Yeah.
On this, on the grant, the 319H grant expires March 19th, 2013. And that's been extended...
March 19th?
2013. They won't ever fund this project currently, what we have in hand right now. And that's been extended a couple of times because the original grant was, original grant, it's been amended two times over when we got Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. So the city, DEP was reluctant to, to extend this, this time. I would dare to say that they would, they would not extend it, incurred it, based on...
So, so the July date would not work? If we waited for that grant, for the resubmission of that grant application, it wouldn't work?
I think it would be very problematic to complete it within the timeframe.
But it's a, but it, but the, the extension on the grant is till March 19th, 2013, correct?
Correct.
What if we're under construct, what if we're under construction? Does that make a difference with an extension? Do you, I don't know.
I don't know the details with the TMDL grant, whether or not money's already extended, can be applied on this grant.
Do you know, Alan? Because usually it's like a kind of a step process.
In order for us to get the last extension that we, that we did receive, we had to go out to bid. So I'm sure that they are relying on us to award the bid and get under construction and not planning on, you know, giving us any more extensions.
Well, I just know that on certain grants, especially grants of this size, that if you're under construction, it makes a difference?
Yeah, because we...
To extend it after March 13th, March 19th?
Right.
And you're not just saying, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. So how quickly do you think the Board of County Commissioners would make a decision on that grant?
It will have to, typically, they'll, they'll wait for the interlokal to be prepared by their legal interloper on the agenda. That will probably be just a one percent in general. It's probably a, it's not a deal as American would agree with. But, you know, the downside of waiting to the TMDL grant is that there's a chance that it will not be funded. And if that's the case, then this whole grant will, by the way, sign.
When the term, when the funding, what time of year do they do that?
On the TMDL, the next round is July.
No, I'm sorry. Section 319. I'm not, I'm not so much interested in, I mean, it'd be great if we were awarded the TMDL grant. But I don't, I'm, I'm just saying, it should be a difference whether or not we, it's kind of put the cart before the horse if we don't get $100,000. So we have to make up that difference, so.
Okay. I have a question. Is it going to be a bedway, new bedway? And the bicycle route for the children's school will also still be there? Or there is not?
The current on-street bedway, bike lane, whatever you want to call it, that will be removed. And a newly put wide concrete bedway will be constructed further off the roadway. It'll be meandering in this devoid, power poles in some dry retention areas that we've designed. For the most part, it'll be away from the roadway. And the existing one will be converted.
Okay, and where does this construction start? Where's it going to start? Is it on Temple and then down to A1A?
Basically, from City Hall to A1A is...
Somebody asked me about the ditch last week. Is the ditch going away?
The ditch between Laurel and Temple gets piped. The ditch between, in front of the church, next door, gets improved. And the open ditch in front of the city and then, and west of the city remains. Basically, in front of City Hall, west of City Hall remains.
You still have, you're going to have room to use your equipment, the power back and everything that we looked at?
Well, the only areas that we have to worry about would be the ditch in front of the church and the ditch in front of the FPL area. Everything else would be closed in. So we wouldn't have to worry about using the back truck. I mean, the open ditch, that would be, you know, between Laurel and Temple.
So you're saying, if we don't get the money from the county, $100,000, how would that affect whether we go forward with the project or not? I mean, either we get it or we don't, but...
Well, I'm just saying, you may get awarded the grant as well. I'm just, if Cassia is, this bid is awarded, what's the timeframe for completion of construction? How, where would they start?
Probably start by Middle Lake to Maine. The contract requires substantial completion of the 150 days and final completion within 30 days of that. So 180 days.
Pretty quick.
So, so does approving this tonight then, I don't know who to ask, but does approving this tonight then take us out of the fight for the, for the TMDL grant in July? In other words, could we approve this tonight and still go after the grant?
No, not for this, not for this project. And that, that's probably, I'd say that's 29 specific gates. TMDL is a grant administered by DEP, comes from the same pool of money from EPA, if you will, as a 319. The 319 does have a stipulation that if you, money that are expended prior to receiving the grant or the grant award isn't eligible for the grant. And I think that's what the city manager was speaking of is we would already start spending that money and having covered that money before we would have received that, potentially received that TMDL grant in August or September when we were here from the July complication.
Real rock and hard place, if you will.
Because if we don't get the grant, then we're what, six months behind?
In front of design, if you will. The TMDL grant is kind of a new thing because TMDL grant has been around for a while. But DEP would not allow two, two better grants to be applied on the same project. You couldn't apply that to, I mean, no free project, if you will. So until recently, when my guess is they weren't moving the money fast enough for EPA's concern, that they started allowing that to occur. So when they did, of course, the city jumped on in the fight and made that application. Of course, much other people did too, but for the projects. And we just happened to be below the line of what they could fund.
And I don't have the information from the TMDL grant here. But it's my recollection that the TMDL grant would have changed the allocation of the local match. And I think the savings, do you remember, David, or Alan? It would have reduced our local cost by maybe $100,000.
I do believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Almost 50% of our...
So it would have been versus 320, it would have been 220?
Yes, yes.
And we're getting $100 from the county anyway, maybe?
Yeah, and I, and I think that we can't lose sight of the value of this project in terms of what it means within the community for safety, of the Cassia ditch, the maintenance hours that Public Works puts in, and the tens of thousands of dollars that have been spent on replacing those deteriorating pipes along Surfside and in Laurel.
I have no problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out how to fund it the best way for the citizens.
I think that this is such an important project with the funding, the funding is in place, particularly with the $100,000, that I feel relatively sure, I can't guarantee that the county will approve it. But they've been our partners and, you know, we have Mary Bolden on video.
I can tell you, the county's in a, in a situation with the BMAP TMDL process that they have a lot of pounds of friction impossible to, to get rid of. They're not going to be able to do it with hard products. They're going to have to be creative. And this is what the county's come forward with the city with. They're looking at other cities too to buy all those credits. It's, it's having another BMAP process, processes in Lower St. Johns and the Jacksonville area, and also in, in the west side of the state. They've done some very similar things. So they're, they're using all the tools they have, they can come up with.
It's not about the quality of your firm's work or how quickly this went out to bid or the, or the project. But it's about, we don't have a capital improvements plan. And we were relying on, when we approved it before, this grant that didn't happen. And I have a problem with that. I mean, we're going to figure out a way to make this work, but if we had a capital improvements plan, we would have, it's, I, it's just not...
Well, that's not totally accurate.
Well, then why wasn't the project completed years ago?
Well, because, because we put the project on hold and when another funding opportunity came on. Our plan all along was to use the TMDL, or not, the Section 319 grant and 5941 split. We pursue every opportunity that comes along to see if we can reduce our costs.
Oh, I understand, but now we have to pay the cost, but we didn't have any money budgeted as a backup.
Yeah, in other words, I think what she's saying is it seems like, if you go to this, this list here, like we're getting into places we weren't planning on getting into to fund this. Whereas if we had a longstanding capital, and this is a discussion for another day. But if we had a long-term capital improvement plan, we could possibly have that money set aside.
We have stormwater master plan. And in your 2009, the council at that time, we originally recommended three projects to be completed. They expanded that to include the fourth project, which was Cassia Phase 2, authorized the borrowing of $1.2 million to undertake the Outfall Project at the Ocean, Cassia Phase 1, Cassia Phase 2, and the North Rainy Project. The stormwater, you'll see that we're allocating some stormwater reserves because those projects are paid in under budget and also under the actual contract amounts. So we are putting some of that stormwater. And at that particular time, when the plan, because our funding source is a $65 annual fee on single-family residents, this plan has identified the needs in the community in terms of the storm drainage to meet the mandated TMDL requirements. Our efforts, as Ernie Brown pointed out this evening from the Natural Resources, we're going to get a five-year buy while the Barred County is scrambling to fund their all-time...
Again, there's, again, I don't think there's any argument with the, with all of the business that comes out of this. It's just a matter of how we fund it, the smartest way to fund it. And I think, my personal opinion is, is we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. So it's, it's almost a no-brainer.
It is challenging for the council, but I believe if action's not taken this evening, this project, the Section 319 lunch will go away. So that, that's what's in front of us this evening.
Well, I guess to depress me even more, once we pull this money out, 125 out of the stormwater utility fund and the 175 out of capital assets fund, what's that do to the balance of this fund?
The capital asset fund has about $375,000 in fund balance.
After this?
Before this. So that'll take it down to $200,000. Money that are earmarked from this year to augment that amount. And we're not going to spend all the money. For example, there was funds in there for efficiency study. And we may have to use some of that for some of the items council has already approved, such as the beach capture expenditures and those type of things. And you'll be looking at that, the, the stormwater, uh, that'll take that down to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar balance in that account. And that's what that reserve account, I mean, that's what stormwater is for, stormwater projects.
And any other projects out there on the horizon that, that we need to be aware of, given those fund balances?
The next, uh, project, and we, we began the preliminary discussion, was the Lenoir Trump Basin, which we call the Lower Lane Project. Um, we're probably three to five years away to actually being under construction.
So, it's our last major.
We get a breeder, unless we have a major, uh, malfunction in the drainage system, we actually get a breeder. And because we've spent almost seven million dollars on stormwater, and we're in fairly decent shape.
Having done all the projects we did before, getting that five-year buy is very important, because now we have ten years before we're under the, really under the gun. We had five years of plan for projects in year five to ten.
Right, and, and it also allows us to, to pump those, those, uh, coppers back up.
And I, I provided the council with that, uh, fund analysis sheet to show where, where the payoffs in fourteen and I believe nineteen, or fifteen and nineteen, for the stormwater, what the fund balances would be when the second five years kick in, and we wanted to spend for five to ten year, we're at a downshift.
Well, I just think we need to have this mentality where there's no guarantees. There's no guarantee that a grant is gonna be approved, and we kind of, I think I might have voted no to move forward with this and, and had a lot of questions about, and looked at the, the, the plan, and, and what, this is why I want the workshops, so that we all understand what, what this is all about. Um, and there's no guarantee that the county commission is gonna, county commission is gonna approve the hundred thousand dollars either.
No, guaranteed.
So, I think you always have to have in your mind, hey, this project needs to be done. We need to have an alternate in case of those funding sources don't come through. Instead of tonight, you know, all of a sudden the county commission shows up and says, we're gonna give you a hundred, you know?
And that's why I recommend, uh, proceeding as outlined in the packet, and then to council can revise that if that money comes forward, that's the same.
David, I, I'd like to take a seat, we can open this for public, please.
I don't have more equipment. Um, just logistics, logistics or whatever, how are the, uh, process gonna work? Uh, this work for ladies, she's, uh, four, four-eighty, uh, Greenway, I guess it is, is the ones back up to the house, like a house in...
Ocean Spray.
Ocean Spray, right. Um, there's a gigantic pike of street, uh, just on the north side of her fence. Um, she claims that, that city property, all those things. So, when this project is worked, all those areas are gonna be addressed, all the vegetation, all the walls, all the erosion, all that stuff's all gonna be cleaned up?
Absolutely, and, um, in addition, um, we're, we'll be cleaning that up. I, I spoke with the beautification board, and they, they would like an opportunity to go in there and pull some of those ferns and some of the other plantings out, out of there, and they'll certainly have the opportunity to do that. The old, uh, concrete wall will finally be gone, that was built in the sixties. And, um, and the homeowners there will be, have an opportunity to have a one-time good deal for a stockade fence built into the project, so that if they want it, it belongs to them, they, they maintain it, and so that all the vegetation that hit their property before, now they have a, a stockade fence, so... And it does, you know, relieve their worries that their backyard is gonna be swallowed up by the, uh, by the ditch, because it's happening in a couple of places.
And just David, one other question. I know, as you've said, construction can start at the end of May, which is beautiful, beautiful thing, because the kids will be out of school, you know? But it is probably, construction is expected to go into August, which you have the MOT, it's gonna be a nightmare for the...
Yeah, actually, included in the scope of work, um, which we may not, um, end up utilizing, we do have the construction of a temporary, uh, pedway on the, on the other side of the road, where they would go in there, move some of those, uh, mailboxes back, put in that stable life material. And, uh, but since that time, that, and that's included in the bid, and that may be a credit come back to the city, because the city's talked with the school, and the school does have a, a back entry, if you will, that comes in on, well, Laurel. Um, there's an alleyway there, hasn't been used, fenced off, but we could improve that, open that back up, send the, the kids that live on that side of Cassia, send them out that way, and the kids that live north of Cassia, we would go ahead and cross them to Cassia, or enter that school and, and get them onto Cinnamon. So, we have a plan, whether we use, uh, a safe way of moving them down Cassia or get them off Cassia. So, uh, but there, there's gonna be a timeframe that we're gonna be out there working when the school's in session.
Is that, is that, is Surfside, is a nightmare? And are the folks on Cinnamon aware that that traffic's gonna be coming through, through that area?
Well, from a, from a, uh, a car traffic or vehicle traffic situation, it, it, we're less concerned with most of it. Um, there's gonna be some times when they're unloading the pipe and stuff like that, they're gonna have flagging operation, but we're not, we are not closing Cassia.
Still construction. Still gonna be a pleasant situation.
Still construction.
Gosh, why can't David be in the Lord's shoes?
Can I go open it, David?
Go ahead. David, address the street, uh, the active alternate for the street paving and, and so the council can make a determination on that. I think that's still an issue as we decide. Or the main part, I consider the major construction happening basically from the church, um, to the end of the blackboard, the pipe and the ditch. Um, we have large diameter pipes, we have the equipment. Um, they will be working some of that off the road, flagging operation. Um, the road is gonna get scarred up, it's construction, uh, we'll do, you know, we have the requirements in there for them to protect the road as much as possible. But really, the best thing to do is, uh, mill and resurface that section of roadway as far as the work. Um, we've included that in all of it, just in case bids do come in high. That's something that we could live without, um, we'd recommend, we could live without it if, if we, if we, uh, did need to. But again, Cassia's in a, in, in good shape right now, it was resurfaced five, 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 six years ago. Um, so we want, want to put that in as good, in better condition when we're done.
That would be a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars, which forty-one percent saving would be, so, it'd be good.
Yeah, we can use stormwater money, DEP's money to, you know, to rip some roadways to.
And I also note with eternal optimism that the last time these guys worked for us, they came in ten percent below budget. Is that right?
Yes, pretty close, yeah.
You know, a public works has a, a, a fine inspection and quality control program, matches quantity to what's delivered, and, uh, we get, we get quite a few credits. And we put a full-time public works employee twenty-four seconds into the project.
Now, one other question. Um, the five K that's coming out of the efficiency study, have we, we tapped into that yet?
No.
I'm just worried because that study is not done if they have, um, you know, require further study, that, and we're gonna end it with not enough money to complete that study.
The, uh, the only thing the council talked about that thirty K, when you, when we were talking about beach caster, how would you fund it? So, we may have to look at that, but that doesn't approach thirty, how many dollars?
So, I'll bring that down to twenty-five thousand.
We, yeah. We could leave that untouched, couldn't we, and just go pull the five thousand out of the, out of one of the others? I mean, you're gonna have over two hundred in the one, and a hundred and thirty in the other left.
Yeah, yeah, you, you know, particularly when the, when the hundred thousand comes from the county.
Right.
You know, we'll take a, a look and, and make a recommendation of what fund, probably capital assets is in better shape than stormwater, because capital asset, um, has a balance, adds to that balance every year, and we definitely, uh, in the fall, failure.
There, there is some money available also from the grant, are those contracts?
Except for the...
They still, then we got the five.
So, the question is, yeah, you, you want to proceed with the project, you want to include the additive?
Which is the paving.
The paving, yes.
Do you want to do the...
Other projects, other projects that we had with stormwater, we've got the paving included, but the ropes were in much, uh...
Worse.
Were, were worse than, than what Cassia, Cassia is in fairly good shape.
Having that, having the construction of vehicle traffic on that section of roadway is gonna reduce the useful life of that resurfacing that you did a hundred years ago. And again, with this program, being, being able to do it with the grant funding, we're getting sixty cents on the dollar to, to, to repair it down and get another, what's your, what's your typical cycle for resurfacing roadways?
Twenty-five.
So, that gets renewed, so...
I mean, it'd be a shame to, to have that road all beat up after we get done with the brand new, brand new six, and then have a beat-up road, I mean...
We got some nice roads in Cassia Phase One to do out, but...
Yeah, we did, we really did.
All right, I'd like to open this, uh, agenda item number ten for public comment.
Senator Billman, six ninety Jackson Court, I have a question, is money coming out of reserves? Or is that the capital improvement stormwater? Where's the, the rest of the money coming from? Or is that it? Just those two funds and then that five thousand?
And the fuses, huh?
Fifteen, fifteen from fuses, five stormwater.
And then, we have a plan to, like in the next budget cycle, we're gonna try to find the money back into those accounts? Or how do those accounts grow back up? What, what puts money back in those accounts?
The budget process.
The budget process does, but what got us to those levels? And the capital assets increased annually, because our expenditures have been anywhere on average thirty to fifty thousand dollars less than what the expenses are each year. So, that has built its fund balance.
So, it has an automatic funding source that goes into it all the time?
Or it has an automatic, yes, it's six percent utility that our citizens pay on power. We put it into a fund, capital assets, which can only be used for capital items, and that essentially are items in excess of three thousand dollars with a useful life of more than one year. And then the stormwater utility has a funding source of sixty-five dollars from the, from single-family homes.
So, if we do nothing, money still goes back into that, so that we...
It does, it's in our dues, and, uh, we have a balance in stormwater, because the projects that we originally borrowed that one point two million for, for the, the projects that I identified previously, the four projects, they came in less than what we're estimating when, when the money was borrowed.
Okay, and then, uh, you were saying the capital improvement plan, is this, the advisors that we are hiring, are they making a plan for us? Or how are we gonna get a capital improvement plan?
I think you said the next cap, CIP we had was in two thousand, am I correct?
No, that's in the comprehensive plan, yes.
Yeah, that's not the same present.
No, and, and we have a, a, a basic comprehensive, or a capital improvement plan that I, that addresses identified needs. However, um, with all our, our utility tax money being available in a year and a half for capital improvements, we'll have a dedicated funding source, about four hundred thousand dollars a year solely for capital. And, and that's what the council is even addressing at height, you know, where you just had...
Right, because we talked about we need a fire truck, we need the Cassio, we need, we need all these things. And I'm just starting to look at it, it's like, well, how are we getting money to go into these things?
Yeah, I think that's what was discussed, though, that, that's kind of the lesson learned from this. We, you know, once we get this behind us, we need to work next on a capital improvement plan for the city.
Okay.
We provided preliminary analysis to both the, the efficiency panel and council that shows that five years out, the capital asset plan will have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for capital items, and we'll have enough money to put away on an annual basis, that in five years, that fund will have a balance of one point five million, if there's no additional borrowing for capital items.
Okay, but we are...
But, but I think her point is, is, but we need a plan on power to execute that money.
So, that our fire truck brings again.
Right, now, those are not projections, they, they're not allocated in any particular item.
Right.
Okay, I think it fell off the list to a future agenda item, but I could ask for that to be an agenda that we need to discuss in the future.
That may be a workshop.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, I'd like to bring this back to the council for a recommendation. Whatever, it's normally...
I'll make a recommendation, uh, a motion, uh, to award bid for Cassia Coast Three to Massey Corporation in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents, which includes the additive, alternative, alternatives for milling and resurfacing with the local match to be provided, as outlined in the finance directive April twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve memo.
Do we have to say, do we have to also add, and the potential hundred thousand dollar addition from county?
Yes, if you want to include that, that'd be fine.
Yeah, and include the, uh, the hundred thousand dollars, uh, um...
From Brevard County, which would reduce the city's local match.
I'll second that.
Laura, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Rhodes, Secretary of Commerce, and Building. Did you catch the, the addendum?
I'll write it down. You indicated the motion, but you also added that the hundred thousand that would come from the county would assist in reducing the city's match on this project.
That's correct. And Vice, and that's part of the motion, Vice Mayor Rhodes and the Council of Building. Okay, we're ready to vote.
Councilman Deanen?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Fonte?
Yes, and the motion is, yeah, honestly, uh, thank you very much. David, thank you. Alan, uh, agenda item number eleven.
No, fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen. Fifteen.
At the last meeting, Councilman Billman asked for a national report from staff on alternative options for, uh, gas dispensing. Um, and Alan's favorite voluntary look is prepared to report to figure that, I think, that's about a hundred percent.
Good evening. Thank you. And the folks that utilize the Cassia ditch, thank you very much as well. I was requested to look into options if we decided we wanted to do away with our, our fuel tank and go, um, a different route. So, what I did, uh, was, we looked, first I looked at, uh, fleet cards, because there's a lot of folks that use fleet cards, and, um, the fleet cards are very useful. Um, and my concern was that, you know, on, at first glance, that fleet cards would be hard to, to manage and maintain. However, there's, they do have a lot of, uh, security, uh, devices built into the fleet cards that would make it very difficult for somebody to, um, misuse them, um, as well as, uh, it, it would make, um, mileage tracking and, and things like that, um, and fuel usage a lot easier to track, because somebody else would be doing it for you. All you do is call up the email and they're at this point. Right now, it's kind of a nightmare, especially with Steve being on. The other option that, that's available as well, um, is the, um, the county, they have fueling stations that some municipalities utilize, and they, they work a deal with the county. They get, um, county fuel prices, which, because they use a, a lot of fuel, they get a better price from, from the, uh, their vendors. But the problem with that is, the only, the closest fueling stations are on Wickham Road and down at Melbourne Beach, so it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us. I, I thought they had one at sixty-two, that's really why, at Station Sixty-two over on Seapark. That's what made me kind of, um, go that route. I didn't realize that they were so far away, but that is an option. Um, the third option would be to remove what we have now, um, the underground tank, because there are issues with underground tanks after a certain, certain time, or a certain amount of time. Um, the, the county and the state will maybe pull those out because of fewer making and things like that. Um, the state was made me by the inspector, and our inspections due actually this month, that within a couple of years, they're, they're gonna be asking us to look at that. Um, so we can go to an above-ground system, like we do with the, um, the two diesel tanks at the police department, the guard department, to fuel their generators. But logistically, I think it would be a nightmare, because a two-thousand gallon tank, it's hard, hard to put anywhere in height, you know? So, that, that's kind of a difficult situation. But, uh, those are the options that I, I came up with. I think, um, the fleet car would probably be the easiest and best available option, um, for us, but...
But, but you make a good point, uh, on your write-up in here, or read it somewhere anyway, that the, the issue would become, um, trying to get fuel in an emergency.
Exactly, exactly, and, yeah, that's, that's one of the biggest issues that we had. Well, not an issue, actually, it was, it was good for us, bad for other people. Um, Brevard County sheriffs were actually coming here to fuel, because they had fleet cars, and they, or they used, um, uh, Brevard County down at Melbourne Beach or Wickham Road, and they couldn't get there. So, they were coming to us, because there was nobody else available. Either they didn't have power, which we know, you know, that was the case in, in a lot of places, or if they did have power, there was nobody there, because there was a mandatory evacuation order. So, there was nobody there to man the state, the, the gas station, so...
Yeah, and, and the other thing about moving the tank or digging it out is, I mean, like you say, it's logistic, logistical nightmare. Doesn't look like we have a lot of money left, uh, here pretty quickly. And if the state comes and asks us or forces us to do it, they may bring some money to help us out when the time comes, so... So, that doesn't make any sense either.
Uh, and the other thing is, as I pointed out in my, in my bullets there, once you take the tank out, unless they tell you that you can take it out and put another one back in, once you do that of your own volition, you take it out, re-permitting another tank would probably be a nightmare.
Okay.
You know, and it, you can leave it in the ground and fill it with foam, with, with a lot of places do, I, when I called the county, asked them. And, of course, now you have a tank that you can't do, so...
Is, uh, would it be beneficial to have fleet cars and have this as a standby? Or would the, would the fuel become stagnant if we didn't use it?
Well, the fuel would become stagnant at some point. But it wouldn't make a, a lot of sense to keep an in-ground tank if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna use it. I, in, in my estimation, anyway, you know, if you have two thousand gallons of fuel sitting there for an emergency situation, you're kind of betting on something bad happening, that's bad karma, so is that?
Well, you know, I was just thinking, people that have generators, their schools have generators, that, you know, if they lose power, they put on the generator, and that's their back, their ultimate source. I like fleet cars, uh, especially if mobile were gonna be open twenty-four hours. If they cannot service us twenty-four hours, I don't think it's worth it, because I'm not sure if we have another service. The shell has closed instead of like.
Right. Well, most of the fleet cars can be used at any place. They can use them in Seven-Eleven, which Seven will seven on the throw for twenty-four hours anyway, you know, they, they have.
My, my goal of fleet cars, fleet cars was to bring business to satellite beach.
Right.
And not, uh, I mean, just to have them, perhaps, you know, if we could pump up.
Right, that's a great point.
Mobile station or satellite. That, that's, that's right, that was the reason, not, not just a guy.
Okay, so you guys, there's, there's negatives on both sides of this issue, because we have to pay an additional premium each year for those tanks. Uh, during the hurricanes of '04, we had a leak, and nobody wants to go through remediation to clean up after a gassy. Fortunately for us, we have the insurance and fee the money to pay for it because it was a result of Hurricane G. So, you know, there's some pros and cons on both sides of the issue, so.
Alan, is it feasible, um, is this a feasible option? Fleet cars day-to-day, emergency, use the county facilities. I know it's a big, a bit of a drive back and forth, but it's not gonna happen, hopefully, very often. So would that be a viable alternative?
That would be, that would be a viable alternative. However, as I said earlier, they couldn't, the sheriffs couldn't get there when we had the last, um, hurricane. Even during Fay, they couldn't get down to Melbourne Beach or up to Wickham Road because a lot of roads were flooded. So they couldn't get there to get the fuel. There were, the fuel was available, but they just couldn't get there.
I know, because the winds were fifty-five, and we can read, uh, fire, fire trucks have been gone, and if they're not gone, we can't get up the bushel. So.
Is there a way, like, I know that we're not the only jurisdiction that has cars and gas tanks, you know, diesel tanks. Is, is there a way to have a car? Because if I remember correctly, in Cocoa, we had a card, and you had, it monitored itself, a device that can be added onto the pumps.
Right, well, now you, now, because they have, they have all the punch, you have to punch in your zip code or your PIN number or whatever it is.
Yeah, PIN numbers.
Yeah, now you have to, the, the way they set it up is, you swipe your card, and then you pump, you punch in an, an ID number, and then you punch in the odometer reading off your vehicle.
No, I, I know, but I'm just saying, is there a way to set up our tanks with similar?
Oh, certainly can be looked into that way, yeah.
This doesn't make sense. I mean, I get, I get, I, the word pondering, I like the word pondering, and it made sense. I mean, we, we are, we're probably, we're, we are in an emergency again, and we want to have fuel available. But I'm just wondering if there's a device and then cards are assigned to employees that have cards. You automatically put it into, you know, the accounting system, what department it is that goes to finance and boom, tracks mileage and amounts of fuel?
I will certainly look into that, I'm sure we can, we can put it on our tank.
Okay.
Hey, let me open up just out of number fifteen, any public comment? Mr. Beadle?
Skip Volinter, four hundred and K Street. I was just wondering, had we considered the possibility, Alan, of maybe contracting, uh, with one of the bulk suppliers? The, the people that, uh, that feed the mobiles and the shelves and people like that? About the possibility of contracting to have a mobile device, uh, tanker truck available in the event we, we see a hurricane coming? Where we could, uh, maybe have them on retainer and on two or three days' notice? Move in a tanker that's, that's got, you know, one compartment full of gasoline, one with diesel, to service your vehicles just for that particular, uh, occasion? And I, I know there might be some upfront costs to have that on retainer, but, uh, that would obviate the necessity of either having our own tanks or, uh, being out of luck if the county is also shut down and unable to. In other words, it's just an affordable truck as a backup to the plant bay.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment?
All right, let me bring this back to the council for the decision options. I kind of like that, I mean, I wonder if, if we went from that to some, that's great. And also, let us provide you with the, the data of what we incur in cost now in terms of the insurance, the maintenance of, of those things and the inspection for our tanks. And so we'll, we'll get you more additional information. Following up Mr. Volinter's comment, we do that for a number of items when we're confronted with, uh, central hurricane coming. You know, we'll put the pot down on generators, water supply, and so we're, we're first in the pecking order.
Yeah, we have that with beach cleanup, we have that with, an arrangement with someone to clean up the beach also.
Waste management. And we have, well, we have an agreement for the degree, the degree of, you know, we actually take the additional steps so on, on supplies that we don't normally have and, uh, and do it as precaution.
I think that's a great, a great, uh, you know, what do you call it? It's a great coming together. I mean, I think if we do day-to-day fleet cars at, at the local gas stations and emergency, having a truck there ready to go, um, portable, that'd be perfect.
Part of the city's emergency management plan, um, Don Hughes could speak to this, or the, the park should speak to this better, but there are contingencies in there for that, um, for, for fuel in the event that we don't, we, our pump doesn't work or we just can't get the, um, that's part of the state plan to bring trucks in, so.
I'll, I'll get with Glover and find out if, if they do that on a local basis. Because if we could get rid of the liability that comes with those tanks, I'd, I'd feel a lot better.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. All right, thank you. Thank you, David. Have a great weekend and reverse.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, we're going to. Sorry, I'd like to also thank Alan and, and John for working so hard on, on, we're dogging the money from Brevard County to come up with a hundred thousand dollars. Is there any other example, for example, like the Massey?
John, thank you. All right, we're gonna go back to agenda item number three. Because we did have some people that wanted to make citizens' comments. Are there any guests here who are here for the first time, like, that would like to introduce themselves? All right, uh, citizens' comments, I have two, uh, Dana Vilman and Sheri Van Vingel. Okay, Dana, uh, name, and you have five minutes.
Dana Vilman, six ninety Jackson Court. Um, this might be at the pub with our little discussion about Cassia. But I've been attending a few of the KPEC meetings, and Mr. Friday and I have had some discussions about the budgets. Um, he has pointed out that one of the city's largest expenses has been our personnel costs. And the largest contributor to our debt and problems that we have are the pension costs. One of the main ways that would be to reduce those would be to eliminate positions or to eliminate, um, reduce pensions. Since I don't believe most people are going to support that or advocate that at this time, I believe the council should immediately act some personnel, um, policy changes to try to reduce some costs in areas that don't, um, result in maybe reducing personnel or reducing pensions. Thus, I'm requesting that the council discuss eliminating the payout of accumulated sick leave at the time that an employee leaves their position. I believe they should continue to accumulate their sick leave just like they always have. Use the sick leave, I mean, that's what it's there for at their current rate. They can make that sick leave just like they have been, but they should not receive a lump sum payment at the end of their employment for the sick leave that's on the books. I think the problem with that is, it's going to, um, as Mr. Friday has said, there's like five employees that are into, are looking into retiring at this time, and we have others that contemplate it. So we may be facing a large number of, for our city, number of people that would be leaving, um, employment, and that would necess- necessitate us making a lump sum payment to them. So that's one of my things that I think I would like for you guys to discuss and look at. I believe, I've talked to some people, I believe it requires some one that's changed for that to be done, so. My second thing is, I did a very unscientific study. I went around, I've identified twelve companies, and they're local companies, they'd be mid to large size in the number of, uh, the employees that they have, the type of business, that sort of thing, as well as the US military and the US government. None of the companies, or the government, or the military require, or give this perk to their employees. So it's not like we're doing something very different that would basically bring it in line with, with what the local economy is doing. The second thing is, I'd like for a way that I think we could save money is we put an immediate freeze on any city vehicles being driven home to locations that are outside of the city, as well as eliminating the tricks outside the city for non-city business. I believe this is realistic, and that all departments have a director or a senior supervisor or commander who lives in the city and could respond quickly if needed. I think this would save on the wear and tear, the maintenance costs, the fuel. Um, and since this freeze is temporary while we wait for the KPEC results, and that was one thing the meeting I was at, they were talking about, that we have very high vehicle costs and very high maintenance costs. Um, this would help us work on getting our costs under control while we're waiting for that stuff. And it can always be modified because it's a temporary freeze that you guys put on as the situation's more into individual bases as you see me. Just that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Vingel? May I ask you, I, I know you have Dog Park, is this on the agenda item of the Dog Park?
Yes, it is.
Usually we address those when we talk about the agenda items, but did you want to say anything?
It was, I was getting really brief.
Right, good, how?
I'm Sheri Van Vingel, thank you. I just, I am an annual paying member of the Dog Park, and we enjoy it tremendously, as well as so many others that are there regularly. And I saw this was on your agenda item, and I just wanted to ask that you please, uh, allow these ones for the soil and, and sod down there. We're getting some quite large, uh, point of sand traps. And it's a little dangerous when your dogs are flying around. We just, one, Australian shepherd the other day, she, she went into the sand trap and, and came the other side and could be, there are legs of harm, and she came out of her chest. It's just, it's, it's gotten a little teeming, and that's all I needed to say.
Thank you, and, and thank your hostmen for the wonderful schools that we have in the city.
I totally understand, so.
It's, I, I mean, we have four great schools, and it takes very good care of us, and we appreciate everything that.
And our daughter lives over here in Satellite, too.
We appreciate everything you do.
She went to Glora, and she, she did not want to leave.
That's a good idea. Well, that, that's fun.
That's how I do my Dog Park.
Well, I was just thinking, you've got several views, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, City Council members. Uh, let's start with Councilwoman Beadle.
Um, just a few comments. One, I didn't move over here because I dislike the mayor. I moved over here because I'm hearing impaired, and if you notice, I have to lean back and turn my head constantly. And this just helps me not have to turn my head so much, and we're gonna see if it works out here at times. And then the second thing I wanted to bring up, um, was at the last meeting, the citizens were not, um, permitted to comment on an agenda item. And I went back and I looked at the council policy, and, um, citizens can or are entitled to speak on any agenda item that's under consideration. I think that that needs to be taken seriously, and that's all that I can say.
Hey, Councilman Bill?
Uh, Redford, uh, went to it, and we didn't have a forum, so we stuck around and talked anyway, but we didn't, but it was good. And, uh, an item has come up this week that I think bears some discussion. And, uh, what it is, is, I think we have to, as a city, and as a council and as, as city staff, look at, uh, enabling folks to come in and rehab properties versus telling them why they can't rehab properties. And, and let me just lay it out kind of real quickly and, and, and high level. A gentleman wanted to come in and buy a place over on Centimen. He, he is a part of a five hundred million dollar, um, uh, med tech company. They, they do medical, uh, technology stuff. He wants to bring part of his five hundred million dollar company down here from Pennsylvania. Uh, he's been looking at business property along the beach, in, in Satellite Beach, and he was looking at a place to buy in Satellite Beach. He, uh, ran into some issues. He probably got the cart before the horse a little bit on how he went about looking at property. But he found a place that's been sitting vacant and fallow and, and going into ruin along Centimen and put an offer in on the house and then realized, oh my gosh, there's lots of stuff that has to be done to it. Well, he knew that there was gonna be a lot of stuff having to be done to it, but he didn't realize it's gonna be as difficult as it's turning out for him to, uh, to, to be. Uh, he is, uh, so, so here we have this, this, this gentleman who wants to buy this piece of property, fix it up. He, given, given what he wants to do to it, it won't be to the interpretation of some as, with regard to, uh, code. But my gosh, it's an empty fallow house that, that's falling down amongst itself, and this guy wants to come in, put money into it, fix it up, put he and his family in there. Oh, by the way, bring part of a five hundred million dollar business into here, which is gonna mean employees coming into here, which is gonna be more of our fallow, uh, properties get fixed up. And here we are, given this guy, in my estimation, a runner when it comes to, to doing that. Now, can, can you wonder what's going through this gentleman's mind right now? Okay, so I, I'm having this hard time trying to rehab this, this house because, uh, we have some definitional issues, um, going on. What are they gonna do to me when I try to, to rehab the, the building I'm gonna buy for my business? And, and what am I gonna tell my employees when they say, hey, boss, where should I live? Do you think he's gonna be apt to say, come on down and live in Satellite Beach? All I'm saying is, and it's, and it's nobody's fault, but it's, it's a mindset, I think. Last, last council meeting, we determined as a council that our number one goal in this, in this year was to increase business in the Satellite Beach. Here we have a gentleman with a five hundred million dollar med tech business to come in, wants to come in here. He's operating the whole business, unfortunately, but he wants to bring part of the business in here. And here we are, not laying out the welcome mat too well. Um, and I just think that we need to, as a, as a city, um, we need to, and, 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 and we need to enable these people. We have to tell them how they can get something done, not how they can't. Finally, today, Mr. Beetle called me, and Mr. Beetle and I had a talk, and I said, I said, Jim, I said, we need to figure out how we can get this done, not why we can't get this done. And Jim came right out, and he goes, there's two, and I said, I said, in your, in your legal mind, what's the quickest way we can get this done? He goes, there's two quick ways to get this done. One, he comes to and presents his case to council with his drawing. Two, we, we do a code change. The first is probably quicker than the second. So I said, Jim, I think what we should do is he should come present his, his case to council while we're talking about a code change. Because who knows how many more of these types of people have come through here and have gotten what they got? And we're sitting around here with a pretty high percentage of, of empty houses that could have been fixed up by now. So I think we should take a two-pronged approach to, to this effort. I'm a little concerned because I think if we were to come to this, uh, maybe if Mr. Beetle would have known about this earlier and would have gotten involved, maybe that gentleman could have been here tonight to present his case, so that we could have got moving. Um, so all I'm saying is, we need to, we're, we're talking about all this great stuff we want to do. In order to do it, we need to lean forward in the straps a little bit, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
That's good. Yeah, I think, uh, follow up with, uh, Councilman Billman. I, I think it's important that we look at, uh, the, promoting the businesses with CRAs and different, uh, ideas, uh, for, uh, making exceptions to the rules to get without, uh, compromising too much. Um, I know that there's a lot of, uh, a lot of sales going on, I've talked to some real estate people and things. There's a lot of foreclosures and, and short sales and things like that. There's two on my street, right across the street from me, and they're, they're, uh, they're moving in, they're rehabbing the place, pulling out, uh, kitchens and bathrooms, and, and they redoing the roof today. And, um, and I, I think, I think.
today, and I think things are looking up for us, and things are going to be good. Mary Belen commented that she's been here 20 years. Two days ago was my 10 years ago I moved here, April 30th, 2002. So I've been here 10 years, and it's fantastic. I kept looking for the downside, and there's no downside to Satellite Beach, and I think it's a great place to live. We went to the kids, in Sunset Elementary, they had their annual fundraiser for the backyard bar, excuse they call it, they raised over $5,000 for this. It's great, so maybe we can do something with that, or fundraise for us. That's all I can say.
I'd just like to say, for some agenda items, and just for Cheryl, I'd just say, some agenda items don't lend themselves, and we may redefine them as IOs, information only, because sometimes the, you know, the city manager can either send us a letter or give us an IO, which, and it would be something just for us. I think you were referring to the FRS plan, the conversion. I got to tell you, the council was not in line with what we wanted to do, and the presenter did not have all the facts, so that's why I did not add that. But, and that was in information only. I even thought like Satellite Labs tonight was I-O, because we just need that information to work. So if there is an information only, I would ask the city manager, so not to make an agenda item that says that public comment, I love public comment, we all do, I have never stifled public comment, just that sometimes I don't, I just think it's preemptive. FRS is coming back in '16, he will have more, and then we're going to discuss that. So that was my rationale. I know you didn't agree with it, but, and then, and then Greg, what I would say is, I was thinking today, I've been up here about 215 times, ease, and I like what you say, I just know that when we do one thing for one person, we have to remember to do that to everybody. So I like what you say, if we help one individual, and it doesn't matter how much money he has or what he brings, the next person that comes to the table, we have to treat exactly the same way.
Yes, sir, I agree, and that's why I said it's a two-pronged approach. One, we take care of this specific incident, instance, while at the same time we look to the code change, so we don't have more of these people.
Yeah, because I know a couple of times, we did grant something, and then somebody else came in, and we said, no, they said, hey, you did this for them, now why don't you do it for me? And it's hard to justify as a city council, but why, so we just have to be consistent in all, in everything we do.
I agree, and I think we can do that and be successful at the same time.
I like what you're saying, because all this does is, it gets it back on the tax roll, it gets it, and by the way, on a higher tax than it was before. In fact, I don't even know if they're paying any tax on the building now, but there's so many good things that come out of this, and I agree, and Mr. Beetle gave me that caution, that we have to make sure if we do that, we're going to run into a brawl, and that's what made me think, okay, well, we do it for this guy with this effort, but at the same time, we have a same effort going on to change the actual code. And I will tell you about RX, one of the things we did, we have no commercial that we allow beast of aid when they, but RX was one that we did, because of the things they do, they are in such R and D that they, this guy was cure of cancer, I mean, they do a lot of things.
This guy was briefing me on his stuff, and what he does is, he does medical, he does medical, growing animal parts for medical use, like heart valves and stuff like that.
And they use drugs to cure cancer. So, I mean, but the council has already said, no commercial beast of aid, but we like it.
Right.
There's a few great thought in, and he was one of the.
All I'm trying to say, Mr. Mayor, is we need to have common sense when it comes to applying the.
Regarding on RX, it wasn't prohibited, I mean, it wasn't permitted, but the council worked very closely to encourage the previous owners to develop it, and we got a beautiful facility out of it, and they employed a number of physicians and employees there for a number of years.
I think only good can come out of this leaning forward.
And I like.
The key is, it puts that in a difficult position, but if it's done in a public meeting and hearings are held, then the council has great latitude in dealing with the code. And if the council, even though it's getting late, the council has a few minutes, if the city attorney could outline those two options.
That'd be great.
Sure.
We spent a lot of time on this this last three days.
Good. You want me to go through the whole analysis?
Yeah. We'll take about 10 minutes.
Okay.
They take you to.
Basically, basically, this house is on Cinnamon, it was constructed in 1955, which was before the city was incorporated, and was built with a carport. Sometime in the 70s, I believe, which is one of the things I saw it tied down yet, but ever since the mid 70s, the city has required a two-car garage for every single family residence in the district in which this property is located. So the residence is a non-conforming structure because it does not have a two-car garage. The city's code requires, currently requires, at least two off-street parking spaces in addition to the garage spaces, so in essence, each residential unit is supposed to have four off-street parking places, so you're not parking in the street on this. The garage that currently exists in the property was built in 1983 by enclosing a carport, and the carport for the garage is designated on the plans as being 12 by 20, with an 8 by 7 opening for the garage. And at the time, the city actually had a definition for garage, which is different than what it is now, which basically said it was an enclosure for vehicles, I believe, and the garage dimensions were consistent with the definition or the minimum requirements for a garage at that time, including the 8 by 7 opening on the front. So they complied with the minimum requirements of the code for what a garage had to be, although it still was not a two-car garage. In essence, they reduced the non-conformity by getting rid of the carport and putting a garage. We now get to where we are today, and as a lot of the council members have seen in some of the emails, a lot of the issues that are going back and forth, but the problem is, is not everybody's talking about all of the code provisions that actually apply. The two that generally apply, as near as I can tell right now, are, relate to the non-conforming structures, and it's in 30-423 C12 of the code. And basically, it says it may be continued so long as it remains otherwise lawful subject to the following, and the two applications are alteration of structures. It says it may be altered as long as the non-conformity is not increased in any way, the alteration complies with all applicable regulations in effect at the time of the alteration, and the entire resulting premises meets all off-street parking, landscaping, and impervious surface requirements of the chapter. There's also a provision in there which might have some of the discussion, the argument, I guess I should say, that the proposals that are being suggested would reduce the non-conformity. I don't know that I would totally agree with that, but that's where a council can make this decision. It says the owner can submit a site plan for approval to city council to authorize whatever it is that he wants to do, as long as there's a reduction in the non-conformity. And the obligation that is also in there is to the extent how possible city councils shall require compliance with all land development regulations in existence when reduction is permitted. So under the current code, that would appear to be the only way that he could proceed as a council or to vote as a body that, I mean, obviously, he's going to have to come in and comply with the site plan requirement, but council in theory could vote to determine that this was a reduction in the non-conformity for the total structure on a lot, and proceed that way, and that would be the shorter item that Mr. Billman was talking about. And the other one is obviously, which there has been some discussion also in some of the emails about altering the code to deal with, Ms. Dean is the one that basically has talked about this a lot, about dealing with some of the older properties and making provisions for those properties, why are they, you know, her rhetorical question is, and why should they be non-conforming because they've been there forever, and you're going to try and make them conform, you're basically creating a non-conformity because you want everyone to have two-car garages, even though these things have been here for 30, 40, 50 years with a carport, or a one-car garage. So that's, those are kind of the two tracks that are out there.
And I think we have to take a look. Mr. Beetle, did you, were you going to get in contact with?
I talked to Mike, and I have, we have gone through everything yet, but basically, I brought up, I broke the issue with him about contacting the property owner to follow that alternative if he chooses.
I think Cheryl makes a good point, too, you know, because we said, you can't, one of the things I remember recently is that you can't park your driveway, and we have some car driveways, I mean, you can't overlap on the street, but we have some driveways that when the homes were built, you have to, you know, people didn't want to walk around, and maybe what you're saying is, if you have a house built before the city, and we need to look at that.
And Jim and I kind of had this, well, you know, I still don't quite understand this, we all, you know, I'm going to do math and stuff, different papers from it, but aren't you increasing the non-conformity if you take the garage away?
Well, that's the argument.
Oh, well, are you?
I mean, I just.
So we know about you, you decreased the non-conformity, but if you take your garage away, you're increasing the non-conformity, because I'm, Mr. Gray is a very persistent gentleman, and, you know, he has called, he has emailed, it's, he's a very persistent man, and he's very intelligent, so.
One of their arguments, and that's, I'll put it, and I will preface what I'm saying is, I've already talked to both Ms. Dean and Mr. Billman about this because they were involved more in the process with the emailing, because, so basically, the issue is, is when you look at non-conforming uses, you need to go back to the point in time when they became non-conforming, what the issues were that created the non-conformity when it first started. One of the arguments that being made by the property owner is, is, well, this is not a garage, which I don't know, but I agree with that, but again, that's where the opening is for, I think, because, again, it's the property owner's obligation, quote unquote, to come and talk to council, to try and convince council that yes, this is going to be a reduction in the non-conformity, to allow me to do this. But, I mean, and the other thing, the other thing you have to remember, too, is that, and that's why I brought this up, and what I read is, is the off-street parking is an issue, and whether, and whether he can deal with that, I have no idea. I mean, that's an overriding issue, too. He may be able to decrease his off-street parking requirements, I don't know. I don't have any idea what this property owner is intending to do, but there may be other ways for him to deal with the issue, which I have no idea about, but that's not my job or your job for that matter, it's up to the property owner to make that presentation regardless.
I think you need to be careful also, or the council does, that it is a process, it is a site plan process, it isn't just, he's going to have to spend money on drawings that are certified, and it's a process to go through, and not just say, come on, he has to demonstrate what he's proposing, so.
Because basically, what's going to happen is, it's like, to put it in context, it'd be like, which I don't think we've had one in a while, but it'd be a lot like a commercial site plan approval, so whatever, whatever is done is going to be, the council would essentially approve whatever the site plan is that he proposes, or approve of the modifications, is basically what would happen, if council decides to approve.
And, you know, and I'm still bewildered by this, the city, and I know it is the buyer's responsibility, but it also is the city's responsibility to give people proper guidance as the professionals that, you know, that we are, and let the standards, and if you go back and look at time, the house was built in 55, then we had an ordinance on the book that required, in R4, a two-car garage, but we committed a one-car garage in 1980 something. I mean, it's senseless, it's senseless, and now today, in 2012, sorry, we're saying, no. It's.
And that's why I say consistency.
Exactly.
I deal in big picture stuff. We have a house that's fallow, it's been sitting empty, it's falling down amongst itself. We have a guy who wants to come in, put money into it, build it, get back on the tax rolls, and to me, in and of itself, that's less non-conforming, because there's actually somebody living in there, paying taxes, and making a darn nice house, I'm sure.
Is it that either city council or have the city attorney made contact with Mr. Gray to explore his options and place it on the future agenda if they can work out the detail?
Yes, and at the same time, I think we need, I don't know if it's a workshop, or what the proper venue is, but I think we need to set up an effort to review the code on this thing, so that we don't have more Mr. Grays, that we can actually get folks in here and start, start making some changes.
Thank you, council. Jim, was that your, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I have this on the agenda, but I can tell you what, regarding the attorney general, can I go ahead and let you know what happened? I did call the AV's office, and the person I spoke with indicated that it's in the chief of staff's office for the beginning, and that's the last place it is, with the CRA.
That's CRA reference, yeah.
Yes. And that's, they indicated that's the last place it goes before it gets released. And I asked how long they figured it would take, and they said they can't wait until morning, but, I mean, I'll call, if I don't have it before the next meeting, I'll call like I did this week on Monday, and try and figure out where they are on the talks. But it sounds like it's fairly imminent, just like what you're referring to. But, no, you know, it's done, I think, seven or eight weeks, and I think that's what I indicated to council, it probably took two months, so we're pretty close to it. I think that's the middle of the quarter. I guess it's been two and a half months. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carrato?
A number of items. I've enclosed in the packet for tonight's meeting, the city manager evaluation form, one that has been utilized by the city for a number of years, and the one submitted by Councilman Billman. The council, again, asked to take a look at it and come back with your input regarding what you would like to see on a form. Typically, the city managers evaluate them until I office timeframe, and we'd like to have a form in place so that can take place in July.
Do you want us just to email?
Or you can.
Fine.
National Day of Prayer is tomorrow, the breakfast, sponsored by the local clergy, will be at Nemus at 7:30 a.m. Two members of council, five departmentists, and myself will be in attendance, so Satellite Beach will be well represented. On Thursday, May 31st, at 2 p.m. at the Atlantic Plaza Parking Lot, there will be the 20th anniversary gathering for the, to remember Sergeant Ed Hartman and Officer Phil Fly, who were killed in the line of duty. Anyone who can attend is encouraged, it's open to the public. Members of council who are going to attend, please let us know so you can be recognized. Cheryl, you want me to go over the two items that?
Mr. Gray, can I interrupt you? I just put the article on the city's website, so if council wants to refer people there, they can.
Okay. Do you want me to follow up on those two other FOP? Okay. I sent the council an email last week on two items that, one I inadvertently forgot to address last week, and one that I said I would provide written comment on. One is the FOP update. Do you recall that the council had great concern about the comments that the FOP made regarding a member of our city board? And at that time, the council took strong objection to the language of the letter from the FOP regarding the board member, and suggested that the city council write a letter to the state FOP requesting an apology. Following that meeting, the mayor made two phone contacts with the FOP, and I also met with Mr. Gammon to specifically address that particular issue. This information was reported back to the city council at the March 7th meeting. The council then did fully reflect all that had taken place. It was my sense, following the discussion at the council meeting, that the FOP considered this a closed issue, they were not going to pursue any additional actions on their part, and it was my sense that the council thought this was a closed issue, would move on, manage to move on. I'm not sure that's accurate based upon some of the feedback, but I did want to make the information, again, available so that public record reflected, and if there is any action, please advise. I'm not sure that's accurate based upon some of the feedback, but I did wanna make the information again available so that the public record reflected, and if there is any action, please advise.
I, I didn't ask this to be brought forward again for any further action, I just thought that it needed to be put on the record, and the public needed to be aware of the other.
And the other issue is, Councilwoman Dean asked me to address interpretation of certain council actions that occurred on March seventh in retaining the consulting firm C G A, individuals who were here this evening. There's a local website, and I guess there's a number of them, first of all, I don't go to any of the local websites, so if people come to my attention, I do see it. However, this issue related to statements that the city council violated certain provisions of the city charter in retaining C G A as it compromised or violated the duties assigned to the city manager. Only thing that I can pass on is that, as we stated at several meetings, the workforce in City Hall is forty percent less than it was six years ago, ten people are now attempting to do the work of seventeen. And it was my recommendation to the city council to pursue consulting services, at least on a temporary basis, to address interim services for CRA. And so, I made the recommendation, and I feel very comfortable with the recommendation that I did make, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beadle.
Could I comment on that as well? Again, I didn't bring that forward. We're, we're basically, the application is on the webpages that we're interfering with the administration by hiring the C G A, and we're not allowing it, the city manager, we're dictating to him how to do his job. And, you know, a strong word was using, used. And you saw that, and I just thought it needed to be put on the record that, that's clearly not why they were hiring, and that's clearly not what we're doing.
If it's a violation of the charter, I recommend it. Now, I mean, that's the one.
Yes. Mike, I think the discussion like this is good. I, we, we've been doing, we've done the organizational analysis, the, the workbook, I made a kind of a caustic comment at the end, that I was writing the report on my responses at ten, ten p.m. on an evening I was on vacation, just attempting to catch up. And this morning, I came in, not, and maybe I'm bending a little bit, but this morning, I came in at nine o'clock. Why did I come in at nine o'clock? Because from four a.m. to eight a.m., I was writing a report at home that I couldn't have gotten done in three days in the office, because of the demands of the short staff in the city hall. This is why C G A, I think, is going to be involved during our budget process this year, and make recommendations on staffing level, not only for community redevelopment, but in planning, zoning, development, and also special projects. I, I, I think that we're gonna see some benefit from the analysis that they're gonna be providing. We've had some very fruitful discussions up to this point, because the workload is not sustainable with the existing staff level, the expectation is we're gonna do what we've all designed.
In fact, I recall you made a very cogent argument on the efficiency that we gained by hiring C G A versus having full-time staff for this period.
For this year?
Yes.
For what we budgeted, it'll actually be less than what's in the CRA budget. I, I felt very confident with them tonight, I gotta tell you, I thought that was a great presentation. And Jeff knows his stuff. Now, with this, I see Carrie sitting here, I know that she's gonna be there tomorrow at seven thirty, can we move up Carrie's item?
Oh, I don't mind waiting.
Yeah, go ahead. I know, I know, but you, you, what do we, can we move up sixteen? That's on the dog park and the tables, is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Carrato.
And we've reported at the last meeting about the first day of, prime after the summer session, the rec. department took in ten thousand dollars. Well, for the month of April, at least up until the last ten minutes of April, they had brought in a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for class science in the rec. department, for summer program.
Thank you.
That's about the same as last year, is that right?
Well, I think it's more.
You know, it, it probably is pretty close to last year, we haven't looked at those comparisons, but a lot of it's how fast the moms are, how quickly they come in April versus first of May.
And that's kind of a mad rush, and then it kind of, I mean, that's, they're getting everybody signed up for summer.
So, they get the price of classes.
It'll level out now, and now they're just bringing in about eighty thousand a day.
You know, Carrie, Mike talks about money, but I think about the number of children that we administer through these summer programs is terrific. You know, I mean, that's, that's, just great, great.
What is the summer census? Usually, I mean, how many people during the summer use a facility?
We'll have between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and eighty, or just in the chart.
Does that work?
Per day, per day, well, on Monday morning and then tomorrow.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know what you're saying.
My suggestion is, not to walk on any weekday morning during the summer, go to the track or something.
Jim, why are you watching? No, I was just, I was just wondering if I was speaking.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay, I got, I got the word, but it's, it's.
It's late, I'm delivering.
It's, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's why we have two years. Carrie, go ahead, let's, let's.
Thank you very much. I did appreciate Mrs. Bingley coming tonight, she had called me earlier and last week about some items that were, we were already in the, in the, the dressing room. The dog park has monies in its general, in the general fund that move from year to year because of donations and pledges. And currently, the dog park has plenty of money, about six thousand dollars, and it's what I usually call trust fund, but it's more their special account. And the recreation department has asked to have a thousand dollars available to expend for additional sod in the born areas and sand in some of the areas that are lowland, as Mrs. Bingley suggests. This money is available in those accounts, and that still uses about five thousand dollars, remaining in that account.
All right, let's handle these separately, okay? Because they're the tables.
Ethan, I have a question about the sod. I'm kinda sorry. No, no, seriously. Is there a certain type of sod used for heavy trap deer, if your dogs hit, is it like off-force grounds, or is it?
Yeah, we use it for beauty. Same as what should be in your outdoor, the lawns, we hold up that.
I guess my question is, is why do we even need to discuss this again? I mean, aren't you allowed to execute your budgets without having to come to council to ask if you can buy some grass? I mean, sorry.
Your point would be correct, however, this is in a separate account, raised by people that have interest in the dog park, donated to the city. So, when we spend out of those special accounts, we'll get them back.
Okay, I understand.
It's not a trust fund.
But it's not a trust fund in the true sense.
Okay.
We have those accounts, we found that when people were donating to activities that needed, like skate park, for example, it took us, geez, like ten years to get six thousand dollars to add on to the skate park. And if we had earned all that money, and then every year it just went into unbalanced, and we could start over again every year. So, that's why there's some special like this.
Carrie, your second thing that you're, you're looking for?
The second item is picnic tables to replace some of the picnic, or at least one of the picnic tables that we've had to eliminate at the sports and recreation park. Technically, what I would like to do, and the recreation board has talked about this, at the sports park, that one pavilion by the football field just north of that, that would make a really excellent area for folks to hold birthday parties if they reserve that area, that would bring additional revenue into the city. The special idea behind that would be they could put like one of the moonwalks, or splash, inflatable splash houses, lots of grass area, pavilions, water, grass, it would be ideal for that. And we talked about the recreation board using that as an additional fundraiser, but I, I need to get someone to do some picnic.
And you need a thousand dollars from people that have donated money?
Yes, I've got twenty-five hundred dollars donated so far this year. About four hundred of it was from our yoga teacher, who pretty much just gives us back everything we give her, kind of the payer. So, that was four hundred dollars.
What's her name?
Marilyn Hallack.
Are there any others?
I don't have a problem, but, I mean, a thousand-dollar picnic table.
Explain that, Carrie.
Yeah, please explain that.
There's only so many styles of picnic tables, you can't use wood, it's set on fire, and they engrain in it. You can't use recycled plastic, because you can pack that to death, and you can melt that pretty good to a barney. Y'all don't even know Barney. So, the picnic table that we generally get to using at our parks, except for the polygon, the two thousand pounds, that table, is the expandable metal, it's, you know what it is, expandable metal with like the rubber coating on it, pulls up fairly well in the salt pond area, will get about six or seven years out of it, the shipping alone is, you know, two hundred and seventy dollars. And you could have eight of the table.
Carrie, I'd like to open an agenda item number fifteen for sixteen for public comment. All right, let me bring it back to our motions. Our motion, my motion to approve the thousand-dollar expenditure from dog park funds raised in prior years now located in G F unbalanced to purchase sand and sod to be placed at one areas in the dog park, as well as a thousand dollars from city's general donations, contributions, and purchase picnic table for the sports and recreation park.
I'll second it.
And I have a motion by Councilman Billman, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. The comments? Louie.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Bronte?
Yes, and the motion passes unanimously, Carrie, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll come back to agenda item number eight, which approves city goals. So, we can delay this, or we can look at them, and does anybody have any comments? Well, let's, let's look at them on this, the goals. If you wanted to delay this, we can do it next meeting.
Let's just get it out of the way.
Okay, let's get it out of the way, I don't.
Yeah, the only, I just wanna be clear on four.
I got a four right there, too.
Yeah, I, this is, this, what's written here is the way I remember it. However, there was a letter in Florida today that's, that seemed to suggest that we were saying that, that we thought that there was no community policing plan, and we wanted, we wanted, that's not the case. But it's, this is exactly what we discussed, the fact that we wanted to expand the program and to, and to, in order to improve relationships between the, the police and the citizens. And that's what I always thought we had discussed. Well, I was kind of, I was kind of concerned that maybe somebody or folks didn't quite understand what we'd been talking about before, because I think we all understand.
I think this is good, this actually says that we're gonna increase policing, and then the council members are gonna be assigned to it this year, and then we'll work, Jeff, how would you work it out, maybe with an officer assigned to us, or just with yourself?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea, I, I'd like to do it myself, but though, you know, that's, I, I view that as just a, almost like a large neighborhood watch that, where you just get a, instead of a neighborhood, you get twenty neighborhoods or whatever together. And, and the Neighborhood Watch program has been rapidly increasing, you may have even seen an email with another, another one that, that is joint. As a matter of fact, Councilman Billman had discussed a couple of those, and I think that's a great idea. And I, I mean, I can't, I, I always look at things as I'm sure everyone does, you know, is there pluses and minuses, and I can't really come up with any minuses. So, it's, I mean, that sounds pretty, you know.
And then, as an add-on, I think you, you have added a goal, and I had just community policing, instead of a long dissertation, but then I added, also add a community policing program to the CRA plan, which is gonna be the update, so that expenditures may, may be a great one.
And when I add that?
Yeah, I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna come out in this process, we might have a CRA treaty, but I wanted to make sure I was, was clear about what I was also looking for.
Yeah, I added that in my notes, and I just added it to the group. I thought the city manager today, I think this is one of his goals also, so it's, it's just, and it's great. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't know if, I don't know if I'm overstepping or not, I just, I think, because, I think I might know what you're talking about. There was an article in the paper, because it, it made me jump, and I was probably asked by at least six officers within the first two hours of working that day. It just had an article in the paper, and it just listed some of the, you know, the goals that the city council was gonna do. The way the paper reported it, in bullet form, it said, bullet, establish a community policing program. So, I don't know what you're talking about.
I saw that, but after that, there was a letter from an individual, and the individual seemed to, to, well, he, he, he didn't seem to outlay the facts quite as, quite as true as they were. The, the fact is, we're not dense up here on council, the fact is, we did know there was a community policing program going on. And in fact, you and I, and all of us had talked in depth about it at that meeting, so I appreciate that.
Oh, I, I, I remember this too, and I think it said we lack basic, basic common knowledge, which I believe is the definition of stupid.
And how could we, how could we be on city council if we didn't understand what was going on?
Well, I, I'm just addressing, I'm just addressing the articles in the paper that it just made it sound, the way the paper reported it, obviously, you know, I know, we all know, everybody in this room knows that there's, there's a community policing program, and has been a while time. But when it just said establish one, to people that aren't in this room and didn't know, it made it sound like we didn't have one. And that, you know, that's kind of, it's got.
That's just four Florida Today reporting, which I'm used to.
I was, honestly, I was, I was trying not to say that, but, but it didn't, it definitely made a bunch of us go, hey, wait a minute, I mean, but we all obviously know that it's.
And I think that's a great plan that we worked up, I think that's gonna work out perfectly.
I'd like to open this for public comment, any comments on the goals? So, let's bring it.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the council list of goals through twenty-twelve as written.
I have a motion by Councilman Billman, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes, Louie.
Will those goals be published?
They're drafted right now, and so we'll, we'll publish them once we go, once we approve.
Like, can I go on the transparency page?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes unanimously, they may even be visible on the agenda package that's, that's on the, on the website today. In, in draft. All right, thank you, everyone, that was a great process, and we're doing, we're doing. All right, agenda item. Okay, we'd like to take a five-minute break, please, I'm sorry.